Everybody, and welcome to the Georgetown Planning Board. Today's Wednesday, June 12th. My name is Christopher Rich. Seated with me are members Robert Watts and Matildeo Revangelista. The chairman, Harry Locatilia, is going to be late this evening. And until he arrives, I will act as chair. First on the agenda is the minutes of May 22nd, 2013. Do we hear a motion?
We accept the minutes as written, pending any additions, changes.
Seconded?
Second.
Any discussion, changes? Tilly?
No, I-
No, I went through it and looked close enough.
Yep.
You got the drift.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Next on the agenda is correspondence. Howard?
There's four items the planning board received. Nothing of particular concern to the planning board. Most of them are located in properties far from town.
Thank you. Next vouchers, town planner's mileage.
Take a motion to approve, what was it, eighteen dollars?
Eighteen dollars and forty-four cents.
Yeah.
Should do, drive around the block.
I second that.
It's the short trips that cost you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Go Bruins. Do you have the vouchers assigned? We'll take care of that.
Do you have the vouchers to him?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going to delay the special permit in hopes that Mr. Locatilia gets here because it works for the benefit of everybody with four members sitting. It's called a supermajority.
It's required for special permit hearings.
A big pardon?
It's required.
So if anyone has an objection, speak.
Can you expect him to arrive?
He's driving home from work in Boston.
I spoke to him on the phone. He said about 7:30. So it won't be 9:00. We hope, pending anything else.
Momentually.
Only one sheet, Howard?
Correct.
Robert, if you would be so kind. Old business, site plan approval for Sixnerino Way. Mr. Planner.
At the last meeting, the planning board voted to approve the site plan application for Sixnerino Way. I have mylar and decision for endorsement. Any of the comments made on the decision which has been circulated around to the board members has been picked up, so.
Okay. Is anyone here for the applicant? Want to give us that so we can sign it? I'm sure the applicant is anxious. Is that a nice way?
That's a very good word for it.
Eager.
We'll take that with you.
And while that's circulating, let's go right to Honeydew Donuts.
At the last meeting, the planning board voted to approve Dennis Amarco, his application in 105 East Main Street. And presented here at tonight's meeting is the mylar and the decision for signature.
Okay. Is anyone here for Honeydew Donuts?
Don't we have to vote on the decision?
Vote to sign the mylar and decision wouldn't hurt.
Is it your motion to vote to approve the decision and sign the mylar?
Right.
Thank you.
For Sixnerino Way.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the second.
Second. Tilly, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's unanimous.
Chris, there are numerous pages to be signed. Everyone, is that what we do or just the top?
There should be just one signature page.
Yeah, just the cover sheet.
Just the cover sheet. Tilly, agree with the same motion for Honeydew Donuts?
Yeah.
I second.
All right.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Well, I have a question about the Honeydew one because I noticed that the planters aren't done in the driveway. When was that going to be done? In the parking lot?
What was your question to?
The planters, remember, in the parking lot, there were going to be two sections of planters. I don't see them accomplished.
Have they finished?
Oh, yeah, there are. It goes all the way down West Main Street.
No, inside the parking area.
Oh, oh, oh.
There's nothing in there.
Have they done the striping yet?
It's on the plan, correct?
It's on the plan.
We're proving it per the plan.
Yeah.
And the decision. It's in the decision, addresses the plan.
Right.
I wouldn't have a problem with it, especially with the landowner. If he says he's going to do something, he does it.
Yeah, I know. He has been doing it. I'm only asking, when does he plan on doing it?
Sure, we can find out.
That's why, you know, does he know he's, it's not a forever thing?
Right, right. He knows. Dana's pretty good. They've done an excellent job dressing up the front of it.
Yeah.
They're doing some more measuring with this one.
Yeah, looks very nice.
So, sign?
Want to bring this, the light over?
You just need the top sheet.
Just the signature page on both.
Bob, just the signature page.
Okay.
What's up?
Do you have these, the mylar's too?
On behalf of the back pages of the decisions, Lee.
I guess I didn't do that.
Oh, with the second sign here?
Okay.
Howard made them immediately approved for us, Tilly.
We went to that circus once, I don't want to go there. Lot of cables here, sorry.
Thank you.
There's two for you to sign, two places.
Okay.
Leave it to an IT guy.
A little bit of a mess in there. Octopus, yeah, this is not safe. It is not safe, yeah, right.
That really meant for walking.
No.
But you did get the wire.
That's why I walked in.
You got the wire down by your chair.
Yeah. This, I'm happy with. But I'm easily pleased. Any word on, now, what's up with you two?
That's got all three, Chris.
I don't want to get eaten by this thing again. She's-
Back, yeah.
She's saying front and back.
Along the edge. Did you get something in the mail like this?
I did. Howard, let's go to the planning office.
Figuratively speaking.
On the agenda?
As opposed to downstairs. It's a little joke there, Chris.
He wants to see if we're awake.
I'm ready for a nap myself.
Me too.
Long week.
Yes, thank you, Brian. In your packet was provided information regarding the M account for Bella Woods. And this releases escrow funds currently held in the name of Mount Vernon Development Corporation for Bella Woods. And in summary, Bella Woods is now a town-accepted street.
Everybody can now take a sigh of relief. Would the record show, please, that the chair has arrived at 7:21?
And the table is ready to leave. Chair has arrived?
Do you have a tidy note?
No. I'll have my wife-
By the way, while you were out-
I have a speeding ticket.
You've been appointed to eleven committees.
Eleven committees.
Sixteen subcommittees.
Nothing like it.
That'll teach you for being late.
Show me. Yeah, show me. Can I catch up?
We have gone through the minutes.
A little bit.
Correspondence, vouchers, holding off on this. That's done. We were just hearing Howard on Bella Woods. Let's finish that. How much money is it, Howard?
Seven.
Seven, four, three, six, which would be eight cents.
Three, three, and forty-two cents?
I assume this is a release of a-
Seven thousand, four hundred, thirty-four dollars and ninety-four cents.
I hate to give that kind of money back.
I know, isn't it strange?
Well, it's not yours, though. I treat town's money and everybody else's money as if it were my own.
I think the planning board-
Was there a motion to release it? I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to release Bella Woods' escrow fund, account number 26410.
Second that?
Robert, seconded it. Any discussion? If being done, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous. Are you ready to proceed with the public hearings or you want to do that one last?
I'll just wrap up, if I could, the planning office.
Go for it.
Included in your packet, the packet was thick this week, but included in the packet was the site plan application for 124 Tenney Street. And that will be a public hearing held the end of July.
I had some questions when I read John's letter, the building inspector. When I looked at the intensity of use schedule, he made a note about it, saying that it needed a special permit, but it's in the industrial area. So the P on the intensity of use means it's a permitted use, not that you need a special permit.
Isn't it in the water resource or the groundwater district as well? Right, that's what I, the special permits with zoning. There's like three quarters of that lot is in a, one of the, what is it? Water protect- The water resource district. Water resource district. Not the protection. Never get that straight. I'll never get those straight ever.
All right, that's what he meant.
Yeah.
Instead of saying that, he said intensity of use schedule.
Howard, in order to be, cut to the chase and be expeditious, East Main Street Recreational Facilities, is that just for a continuance?
I talked to Lou. He said he would be in here, it's just for an update, but it is for, to be continued.
I said he can wait then.
Yeah.
So he goes, Mr. Chair?
He also should be here to submit a Form H, extension of time.
Do we want to hold off five more minutes for, with the hope that Tim Howard might show?
I think it'd be smarter if you had a full board.
I haven't- It's better for everybody concerned if you have a full board.
Have we heard from someone?
No, we're not holding up. We're going to have a short meeting here. Before you arrived.
Rumor has it, some sports team named the Boston Bruins is playing tonight.
I understand.
I understand that President of the United States made a comment about that.
But didn't Tim miss the original for this?
Tim lost.
And that would make two.
Right.
And that's the magic number. Two is the magic number for Mullins. No more Mullins, he's out of the game.
He said he would be here.
He's out of the game.
He said he would be here?
Sorry, I missed the last meeting. I will be at the next.
I understand. And that's the reason I'm asking the board if they would like to wait, but if the board does not want to-
Ladies and gentlemen, let me present this while we make you wait and see if I can take five minutes to say this, and hopefully he'll come in.
Explain it. It'll do good.
Under the law, where you have to have a supermajority on a special permit, you need at least four members. If for any reason one of us is not here at the next meeting and Tim Howard is, the hearing can continue. If not, then it has to be continued, or it can't, by operational law, we cannot, the board cannot vote on it because it's not four members voting. The law says that if you miss one meeting, and Tim has missed one meeting of this hearing, you can watch a video, read the transcript, and certify that you're up to date on it. But the magic number is if you miss two meetings, you then cannot bring yourself up to date. So if you want to wait a few more minutes and see if Tim comes, I think it works to everybody's benefit. Counselors, are there-
When you come to the last meeting late and you waited for him, so what hearing did you get?
Was he at the last meeting?
We're not talking about him and Lisa Lane, we're talking about him and Park and Rack.
East Main.
East Main Street, right.
Oh, okay. You did make that one.
Right.
Well, I burned up a couple of minutes, so.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about Lisa Lane.
Yeah, that's fine. If he was here for Lisa Lane, then you can do a mull.
Lisa Lane's been hurt once, he was here for Lisa Lane.
You can do a mull. I didn't know he was here. I didn't remember that he was here. My mistake.
Lisa, I can go downstairs and-
Well-
No, I have it written down, he was here first.
Was he? Excellent, yeah. Bob, we've established that Tim Howard was here at the opening of the hearing for Lisa Lane.
That's called the chair throwing the vice chair under the bus.
I did?
Small bus.
Small bus.
Little bus.
Volkswagen.
See what I kind of mean? I usually ride it.
So Tim was here, so-
So even if he misses tonight-
Go for it.
He can do a Mullins form by watching the transcripts, reading the transcripts. So let's rock and roll, we might as well look at it, and we might as well, I'll call the opening of, excuse me, reopen the special permit for Lisa Lane OSRD, continued public hearing, and we'll reopen it right now. And the applicants, please come down, and applicants, representatives, please come down and state your name for the record.
Thank you.
Is that where that came from? This is Tilly's.
I was ready to steal it.
That one's mine.
Good evening, Jill Mann here on behalf of Arts and Development LLC, the applicant for a special permit under the OSRD section of the bylaw. Here with me this evening is Rich Williams, the site design engineer that prepared the plans in connection with that request. Pursuant to our conversations at the last meeting, we took some direction from the board and, you know, were asked, look, can you talk to some of the abutters? And we did. We actually, a couple of them were willing to reach out to us, and we spoke to a few of them. One most notably who appeared in opposition. We had talked to her and made some revisions and discussed things with her. In addition to that, we understood from the board that what they wanted to see from us was, I guess I should back up. When we appeared before the last meeting, the board knew that one of our issues was that we really did not want to do an OSRD, that we deemed this property probably not to be the best location for that type of use because of the way, where the wetlands situated and where all of the development was that exists today. In addition to that, perhaps the density was going to be too great as far as being condensed into one area, and a lot of people had concerns about that because it brought all the pavement forward and together. And we had told the board, look, we're more than willing to allow the decision to be made because we are not going to go forward with the OSRD. And once the board makes this recommendation, then we actually provide you with what we think would be our best alternative, which we discussed, I'm just trying to recap. And then I think a lot of the abutters were coming out and saying, look, we really don't want an OSRD either. I mean, they may not want a subdivision plan either, but that really isn't something that was being considered even. I mean, there's plenty of time for all of those discussions, as I think Mr. Locatilia had said repeatedly as well. So at that particular meeting, we asked if, potentially, if we could close the hearing, and it was deemed by the board, together, that they would prefer us to come back again to this meeting after having been given the opportunity to review the plan, really look at the preliminary plan, and then make a determination and be able to close that hearing. I believe that the board's intent was to try and get a lot of the issues out, and everybody was kind of nervous that, okay, if we waive one issue or if we try to opine with regard to the OSRD, are we impinging upon our rights under the preliminary plan? And I think the board came to the conclusion that, no, you have the same exact rights under the preliminary plan to ensure that the safety and access of the particular subdivision is appropriate under your rules and regulations, no matter what, and the discussions are going to be repeated and will be more thorough because it'll actually be the definitive plan. So that's where we still stand, and we still would like the board to take into consideration the OSRD and at least try and close that hearing. And I think that was what we had heard from last meeting, that that's what the board wanted to do. But notwithstanding any of that, one of the other issues that had been brought up was a connection. Now, this would apply to a definitive plan, how we can help connect the resource areas, so how we can take property that the town otherwise owns. Howard, you know where it is?
Yeah.
So there's a, can I just show you a plan? I actually-
Would you like a laser pointer?
Well, I don't, if anybody wants to go blind, that would be a good idea, but I'm not good with that stuff. I'm bad.
Is that it?
I think Howard probably can show you on the plan exactly where I'm going to-
I turned it upside down, so-
Thank you, Howard.
Shore Street is over here.
Do you have this one, Howard?
Howard, you don't happen to have that, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay, because you, I thought we, okay.
You sent it to us.
I sent it to you. I don't have it on the machine.
That's okay. So is it all right if I just do it like this?
Oh, it's okay.
So what this is, is it, what's called an aerial plan, and once I describe it to the board, I'm going to turn it on, I'm going to show it to the audience as well, but I need to respond to them first. Okay, so basically, here's the entire area. These areas we're trying, this is our little subdivision, you got to like the cutout, huh? This was Rich's handicraft. So basically-
That's the scale?
It is the scale.
Isn't that funny? Did you bring the tape? You did. He even, I, we-
So you can tape it on?
Well, this is high-tech, by the way.
Could you do me a favor, Joe, and just hold it more vertical?
Is more vertical better?
So the cameras can pick it up?
Oh, that'd be wonderful, yep. I didn't-
It'll be on the back display as well.
Absolutely, that'd be perfect.
I think if you put it on your easel over there, you'll probably be able to-
Okay, so now if you, you can turn, I'll still show it to you when you're done, but, okay. So basically, this is our development, this is the property that we have control over. What we are proposing is, I believe what the town would like to see is a connection. I think, Richie, am I right? This is, thank you, my dear. I believe that the town owns land over here. Am I correct, Howard?
What you're looking at there, the blue area?
This is some kind of yellow.
This is, this area here is parcel B that was part of the Pillsbury Lane subdivision. That area, I believe, was taken, either taken tax title or conveyed by the homeowners association to, to the town. So this piece here, which is, is not in color on the map that you guys sent us, I believe the town owns, and it's under the Conservation Commission, maybe?
Probably. Is it like 24L or something?
What's the number on it besides parcel B?
Parcel B. Yeah, it probably has a mapped lot number. Probably has a mapped lot number now.
Yeah.
But this is definitely the town's, the town's property.
It doesn't abut us, so it's not, it's not labeled there.
Well, isn't there just a little sliver that comes out and touches you?
See, I can't, I haven't done the title for these two properties, so-
Yeah, you're going to have a tough time with the one below.
I can't tell you that, but as far as this goes, what we can do is we can give the town connectivity, because over in this area is where you have some of your-
I think this piece is owned by the town?
Well, this piece is owned by the town.
Definitely.
That we know, because Rich looked that up, and it shows the town on the assessor's map.
These pieces are vacant. You know, there's no improvements there. I think one's owned by Tolman and one's owned by-
Tolman, Alson, and two parcels by Eric.
Yeah.
So what we were, one of the things that the town assessed to consider when we went away and came back, which will again be more of a part of our preliminary plan once we get our ANRAD set. And by the way, we have our, I'm pretty confident we're going to be on the scheduled meeting for the 26th for the Conservation Commission to get our ANRAD issue.
Yeah, it's either the 26th or the next meeting. I'll know the next time Steve P. comes in, yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent.
So just wanted to make sure we told you. So what we're planning on doing and showing you, will we become more focused on that preliminary plan and allow the board then the opportunity to really focus on one issue, we're going to try and provide you connectivity like you asked, so to be kind of like this, you know, we'll go around the backland and then we'll provide you, obviously you get access here because we abut you here, so there would automatically be some sort of an access point. I can't, I'm only drawing it like this because clearly until we get our final ANRAD plan, I can't tell you how we're going to be able to cut it, how we're going to be able to do anything, so I figure we're definitely going to try and do some sort of connection. We know we can from this point to this point because you, we own it, and you own, well, we have control over, and we would own it, and you, the town, own relatively close pieces, one we know that abuts and one that we're uncertain of how the connection would be. And then we would connect all the way down.
But where, where is the access, where is the road or right of way?
I think this is Lisa Lane.
Yeah, this is the Lisa Lane. We can actually, we don't know yet. That's kind of why I say to you, we'll give you access, you're going to have an easement right to go. We wouldn't give you, you know, a-
You wouldn't give us the land in fee as a donation?
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's would be part of it. We'll give you some open space land, and then you'll need an access point to get to it, but it's impossible to deem where that will be or how that will be until we actually get to a point where we have the preliminary and we know what the ANRAD is going to show because how are we going to give you access if we-
You have, you have, you already are aware of some issues that you may be addressing at the concom.
Oh, of course.
So I think that I would want to know, as a planning board member-
I think what Tilly's asking-
Is there a right of way for any of those where you can use another access way rather than the ones that you have presented?
No.
No, I'm confused. Do you mean, I apologize, do you mean an access way in order for the residents to access this or for the town?
Residents.
No, absolutely not, no. These are the only two points. They're the only two points of our property that abut a public way, the only ones. These abut land.
And then, Tilly, if we step back a little bit higher up, the area in blue is farther down, land in the upper right.
This?
That's park land right now.
Park and Rec.
Park and Rec.
Excuse me.
The pink area, I believe, is for future consideration of purchase because there, as was alluded to, they're landlocked, they don't have access to them by a public way right now.
Well-
I don't know that, I don't know that to be true. I don't know it.
There are some easements.
There are easements, right. And then the areas in yellow are also for future consideration of purchase if they become available.
Oh, other than the fact that that's the town's?
Can you show me where Pillsbury Development is and where that road ends?
Yeah, right here, Rich, go ahead.
This is Burnet.
Right.[1744.12] Right.
There, it's all the way.
And this is Pillsbury, this is 133.
Right.
Pillsbury comes all the way in and ends there.
Excuse me one moment. Wendy, would you let the record show that Tim Howard arrives at 7:40, please?
So this is Pillsbury.
I know where it's, it is from, what is it, 133? Where and the other? Close, close to your area?
This is the cul-de-sac for Burnet.
Right.
This is the cul-de-sac for Pillsbury.
Oh, I gotcha. And what is that black area between them?
This?
Yeah.
That's that piece that the town owns. It's not marked on that, on that, that piece, but the town, on that PDF that was sent to us, but the town does.
This is the property.
I know that the town owns this.
The Conservation Board or?
Yes.
It's under the control of, the town owns it under the control of the Conservation Commission.
To the best of your knowledge, the property that you marked off with your green arch marker, is that dry?
This area?
Some of it's dry, some of it's wet. It's a, it's a combination of the two.
Well, it doesn't matter whether they think it is or not. All that matters is whether the CONCOM thinks it is.
Absolutely, but I mean, you know.
Let's find out more about that later.
If it's obviously dry, that's what I'm asking you, is it, it's obviously dry?
It's walkable.
There, there are parts that are obviously dry. I can assure you that, but there are parts that are obviously wet.
I'm seeing some hands waving in the background, and it's definitely an open hearing. You will be heard. We're trying to just ask some questions back and forth. It sounds like you have some information to give us. I'll be honest with you, at this point, it's a very generous offer. It's a wonderful thing, but.
Well, this is just what you had asked us to present to you.
At, at this point, maybe, wet, where is it? What are its borders? Where would it be? That's something for definitive.
Oh, yeah.
So I.
I don't see that. I think it's for both. I see.
Really?
I do. And that's why I brought it up. And the, and as far as the CONCOM, I don't know how we can, as a board, come up with a yield plan without the CONCOM reviewing it and coming up with their wetland determinations.
I completely agree, and in, in most cases, just from my perspective, because the applicant has already informed the board that they do not wish to pursue OSRD, I don't see that we need to come up with a yield plan.
I, well, according to the way, my interpretation of the site, of the OSRD plan is that first we have a yield plan. Then we make our recommendation, whether we're for the OSRD, or do you want to go the other direction? But we have to make a recommendation. That's my interpretation. If they so choose one way or the other, but as far as I'm concerned, I want to see the yield plan.
You, you do. You have a yield plan.
My thoughts, Mr. Chairman?
Please, please.
In one respect, Tilly, I agree with you, and in other respect, I disagree with you. If the applicant wishes not to go with OSRD, the abutters certainly are not thrilled with OSRD. I think we heard that from.
Probably so, but according to the town vote for the OSRD, where the town people voted, they want a yield plan first. Then we make a recommendation.
I thought we saw a yield plan. We saw the developers.
Where is the yield plan?
In your package. We submitted it months ago.
But all you gave us was a, was a, was a, a drawing, which is similar to your development.
Which is what the yield plan is.
No, it isn't. A yield plan determines where the wet areas are, where the Conservation Board approves where the wetlands are. You haven't gone through that step yet. So what you've done is just paper and pencil.
But let me, if I, if I may?
If I may.
Okay, please.
You're 100% correct. Under OSRD, that is the methodology. Those are the steps that need to be taken.
Right.
The fly to that, the fly in the ointment there is, some parcels are good for OSRD development, some parcels aren't. Irrespective of whether this board votes unanimously, that we want to see an OSRD plan. They're the applicant, and the way the town meeting vote, vote went down was that the applicant is the one that chooses what the outcome will be.
After, after the yield plan.
Yes, they usually wait until that point. However, I guess they're saving themselves some time.
And money.
And money, and our time.
I don't see.
And money.
By letting us know right up front that that is not their choice.
They, they probably would like that, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm not interested in the money. I'm interested in what is the best plan, rather you, if you so choose a regular development, a regular subdivision plan, how many homes can you have in that? And as far as I'm concerned, I don't see how a developer can make that determination with so little evidence he has. I think he came in with, I want a mega mansion homes, and that's our style of development, and that's what the contractor is going to do, because that's what we like to build. And I don't see any proof of them even considering any other alternative.
As far as the yield plan is concerned, I believe that's.
That's the concept.
That's the concept plan. So that effectively is the preliminary plan, is the.
Yield plan.
Yield plan. It basically is what you could develop the, the lots into.
Yeah.
Using chapter 365 and forming lots that meet all the configurations that are required in the intensity of use. Maybe what we could do is take that plan and send it off to Larry Graham, and Larry could shut, tell us which lots don't work, do work.
If I can add to that, too, Harry, the, the, the concept plan and the yield plan obviously are submitted together. And you're correct, the yield plan is vetted through to see if these are all the correct lots. But the purpose of vetting the yield plan like that is to show the number of units they can get in the OSRD.
Right.
Right? So the vetting of the yield plan, which has morphed into the preliminary, the yield plan, you don't need to do those steps because you're going to be bypassing the OSRD.
Yeah.
And instead, you have the chance at the preliminary plan where all those concerns that you're discussing, the wetland delineation and all those things, will come into play as the preliminary plan is, is developed.
I realize it will, it would have to be, but to me.
And also keep in mind with the preliminary plan, this board can approve a preliminary plan. We can approve that right now, that, right there, right now, right this minute.
Absolutely.
And as soon as this closes and goes out, they have to come in with a definitive plan, and that definitive plan, we can change.
They don't have to do that. If they want to, if they want to abide by our, our preliminary, and the fact is, is that if we approve that preliminary, they have, what is it, seven months? They have to come in with a definitive.
Just submit a definitive.
If they don't come in with a definitive, then our, that preliminary is gone.
Right, but the irony.
Wiped out.
The irony of it is.
Can I interrupt for a second? The, the preliminary is not binding on either the applicant or the board.
Or the board, yeah.
So you, you can approve, deny a preliminary, and it really has no bearing on the definitive other than the applicant can take into account the comments that were made during the preliminary plan process in developing the definitive plan. So it's not binding. You could approve it, you could deny it, and we're going to take the same steps. When we move forward, we're going to just take into account the comments that were made during the preliminary plan process.
Those are locks down zone.
You get the protection of the zoning.
Well, I mean.
And the subdivision by doing the preliminary.
Right, if we were going to change our.
You get it when you file it.
We, we do. But we weren't, we didn't file the preliminary in order to provide us with protection. We filed because that's your process. But it, but I understand your concern with regard to the OSRD, and I, I, you know, your, your concern, and I think Mr. Tilly has said it, and Mr. Richard's said it, that they understand that you want to evaluate it to be able to make a recommendation that's, that's, that's in the best interest of the town. However, regardless, when you approve the OSRD, I am never going to be able to, to get more lots approved on a preliminary definitive plan than I would be able to in an OSRD. As a matter of fact, with the OSRD, I'm going to get a density bonus. So is it in the best interest of this community and the people who are behind me to allow me to do a plan that no matter what, I'm going to get the same, regardless of whether I'm getting 24 lots, 26 lots, whatever I'm going to get? If I get that in my preliminary plan, that means I could have gotten that in my yields plan, but now multiply that because I'm entitled to a density. So I think the point of the other board members are, that you're right, but at the same time, it's not, we are not going to go forward with an OSRD. We don't think it's, we don't think it's in the best interest of the community, believe it or not. We really don't. We talked to abutters. They don't really want an OSRD. They don't want the development moved where we would have to do it. And we're willing not to do that, to not get the added, added lots. We, we, we're willing to do a conventional. And this is just, if you will, judicial, you know, not waste of time. It's, it's judicious to say, let's focus on what the real issues are, the access issues, the traffic issues, the drainage issues, and not be diverted away by an OSRD issue that is never going to come to fruition.
I realize your point of view is from you.
No, but I meant from you.
My point of view is that the people in this town voted for this bylaw, therefore, we have to do what it says, the board does.
Yes.
Whether you like it or not.
I, I don't disagree.
This is where we stand. And so the, the yield plan is requirement for us to make a fair recommendation.
And I agree, and that's why.
And they can do whatever they so choose, right.
Can I see the bylaw, please?
It does, it, it, we, it says we are required to submit, and the board's required to evaluate, and that's why we did submit at the same time with the preliminary. Do you want to see the copy? Or, oh, you have one.
No, I, I don't need to see.
I don't see how you can evaluate without going to the CONCOM.
Because you don't, it, it.
I think it's a concept. Tilly, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think it's the concept of the OSRD. What would they get if, in a perfect world, that's what they have? Like this concept plan, in a perfect world, that's what they want. It's all subject to what the CONCOM's going to come out with.
Right.
We're not going to rule on, I'm sure we're not going to make any decisions on the definitive till after the CONCOM rules. As a member of this board, I heard from the neighbors, the last thing they want to see is an OSRD because as Attorney Mann said.
There was like two, two neighbors.
There is a density bonus, so with an OSRD, there's more units that are actually shown on this plan.
There's about two people that.
Give me two seconds to look at this.
Sure.
While you're reviewing that, Chris, again, out of just expediency, it's, it's a, a process in utility to go through the empty exercise of establishing a yield for something that is going to be overridden by the applicant. I, I don't feel.
Well, for instance, let me give you an example.
For that matter, perhaps what we should, what we should concentrate on doing is, now that we bifurcated the two, we have the OSRD, and we have the preliminary plan. Perhaps if the applicant were to request it, which I think they did at the last meeting, they would ask to close the OSRD portion, and then we would not have to deal with any of the yield plan because it's, it's a moot point.
I don't think we can do it, in full, in all honesty, because we don't have enough facts to determine what a yield plan is, is number one. And number two, we have to follow the bylaw. I didn't write that bylaw. You guys did.
Yeah.
Go for it, Chris. What does it say?
Let's read, let's single it for Rich.
Okay.
Well, can you step back a little?
Chapter 40, section 9, Mass. Generalizes, the Planning Board shall, in compliance with that law, hold a public hearing on the proposed OSRD application and concurrent public hearing on the proposed conventional subdivision. If applicable, in the event both an OSRD and OSRD concept plan and conventional plan are submitted, prior to the close of the hearing, the Planning Board shall recommend which plan it considers most beneficial to the town, and the applicant shall also, prior to the close of the hearing, elect which plan he or she wishes to pursue, and shall inform the Planning Board of his or her choice, which I think they have done.
Where, whereabouts, where, the yield section? When it gets to the yield, up at the beginning.
At the beginning.
Well, that's where we're establishing the amount of lots.
It says the purpose of, and intent, and everything that we're talking about right, right now coincides with the purpose and intent of this.
Where does yield come into it, though? That section?
With the number of lots.
I know.
How you figure out the number of lots?
That means, I just want him to read it.
Oh.
Well, I'm, you know.
Wait for a second, I'll maybe I can find that for you very quickly.
I think, I think the applicant is, by making the election now, is limiting the applicant's opportunities to change his mind.
Yes.
Absolutely. You're locked, you're getting locked in, basic.
He, the applicant's getting locked into a position that now, the only thing that the people in the audience, the residents and the abutters, have to worry about is what's on this concept plan, and their comments can, and energies can, now don't have to be diverted to another plan at the same time, and confuse issues that there's one issue, one plan, one development, and any concerns they have, they can address that because the other one is history. It's not up for discussion.
Right, and the, the yield really is determined by however many lots they can have.
To.
Frontage and acreage.
Right.
To put in. So it's kind of irrelevant at this point, what the yield would be in an OSRD.
Since we're not going OSRD.
Right. They still, their feet will still be held to the fire of making buildable lots.
Absolutely, and, and every one of those lots has, has to meet the.
Right.
The subdivision regulations.
Who cares what the OSRD.
It, it's pretty much a moot point, in my, in my opinion, but others may feel different.
I don't.
I'm sorry, which would we say?
I'm sorry as well. Just to add a little bit of information there, it's not, it's not a concept plan that was just done with pencil and paper. There was extensive existing conditions work that was done out there. We did topography of the whole site. We had a botanist locate the wetlands. We showed the wetlands on the plan. That is the same wetland line that was submitted to the Conservation Commission, so it's not, it's not different. And it wasn't just made up. It was, it was established in the field, and that's what we think the line's going to be. And it, it's more than we would do for, you know, our said, the concept plan for other towns.
So because it's a preliminary.
That's right.
And if the Conservation Commission doesn't agree with your botanist, you'll get fewer lots, but so.
That's right, but it's still, we would still have the opportunity to have more units because we get.
Under the OSRD.
Under the OSRD, we get density bonus for, for increased open space or providing affordable units, which we would be doing.
You said that we had to go to the water resource, is that correct? You had, you, no, no, it didn't?
Mr. Chairman.
Well, what if you go to the CONCOM? This is a, for instance.
Sure, please.
And I haven't talked to the CONCOM at all about this development. What if they said to you that the, the OSRD, we would approve, we would recommend, let's say that, because we're the only ones approved, we'll recommend that you only have two units instead of three as you have drawn out, and because of the, the determination that it's so wet in the area, and that would be 110, is it 110 gallons of water a day per bedroom?
Mm-hmm.
And we would only allow four bedrooms there, rather than what you have proposed, which is, which is six. So you would have six bedrooms on one lot. What if, you know.
Still have to.
I'm afraid of lots.
If six bedrooms on one lot, you still have to produce 660 a day for that building.
You just have to perk out.
I'm going to get by us on the, on the board of health.
And if they thought they could get four-bedroom homes, and they can't get the required leach area to do that, then they get three bedrooms.
He, he, they said that you would need a treatment plan because they're planning on more in the units, the three units in the OSRD. So you would say.
Tilly, I, first of all, I don't think it's within the purview of the CONCOM.
One at a time, guys.
I'm sorry, Tim.
Go ahead.
I don't think it's within the purview with the CONCOM to say two units or three units. Their job is to delineate the wetlands.
Right.
Where's the building and the septic's going?
Right.
Where's the building and the septic's going? Not two units or three units. That's my job.
Very often, a lot that meets dimensional requirements at this point, that just so happens to be close to a delineated wetland, sometimes gets encroached upon, sometimes it becomes unbuildable, and that's. And that's where that back and forth comes. If we approved something like this, you bring it to the Concom.
That's right. And that's not going to happen until the definitive plan process.
Exactly.
In our definitive plan process, as you know, we always have to prove to you that, you know, we can actually, the Board of Health is approving of whatever we're doing. So, and that's, that's going to be in the later stages, once we get all of our other design criteria settled. And I mean, the point of, the point of closing the OSID hearing, and I believe that three of the commissioners have already reflected upon this, is not a benefit to us, it's more to allow a narrower scope so that everybody can focus. I mean, that truly is what the purpose is. I mean, we, the, that's what the purpose is. And we're more than willing to tell you upfront that we have, we do not desire to do the OSID and.
I believe you've already put that in writing for.
Yep, we absolutely did.
With the, with the, with the understanding of the board, I'm about to ask for a motion to close the OSID portion, just the OSID portion.
Yeah.
But before I take that as a motion, I'd like to go out to the audience.
I was going to, that's what I was going to ask.
And I'd like to ask, because we collect, scary as that is sometimes.
It is scary.
Really?
I'd like to ask everybody in the audience, as you know, this, this is a two-portion hearing. One is the OSID, one is the preliminary plan. Preliminary plan is what you see up here. Right now, the applicant has asked us to close one half of that, that hearing process, which is the, which is the OSID portion. If anyone has a comment, an objection to that, I'd like to hear it. If they have an objection to it, I would very much like to hear it. Please raise your hand, state your name.
Kevin Duncan, 46 Cyril Street.
Hi, Mr. Duncan.
I just have a question about it. If it is closed, can it be reopened again?
Nope.
Ever?
No.
Nope.
Two years.
Two years, yeah.
Not for two years.
Thank you.
Eric Rizza, Baldwin Place. Basically, the OSID and the preliminary plan both have the same, they're both coming off of Cyril Street and Lisa Lane. The road structure doesn't change, correct?
Oh, you're absolutely right. The roads, yeah, the access in and out, out to Cyril, no, that's, that doesn't seem like it's going to change. Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Lynn Groh, Slide 60, Lisa Lane.
Is everyone that's, that's speaking up signed in? Did you sign in, sir?
No, I didn't.
Would you, before you leave tonight, please, just so we get it correct, the spelling correct and everything. I'm sorry, please.
I just have a question. You said that it could happen again two years from now or it could reopen again? Is that true?
They could, they could resubmit. But I would, I would probably say that if.
What is the date of the easement?
I'm sorry?
What is the date of the easement going, for the easement that goes across 18 Lisa Lane?
Oh, the access in?
Yes.
I really don't know, but.
Today.
I'm sure they do. And I'm sure that they can get an extension on it at any point in time if they, they want it, but.
When is the original option?
It was, we have an extension that goes on and should we choose to, we could just buy it and take fee title. But we've chosen just to extend the easement option. So, we, it truly is.
It's not going to go away.
No, no, absolutely not.
And we have a re-question.
I have another question now.
State your name again for Wendy.
Eric Rizza, Baldwin Place. She spoke to the abutters and stated that they would rather see the preliminary plan versus the OSID. Would she be able to tell us which abutters she spoke to?
I didn't talk, I said that I'd spoken to some and we had made some changes about them. And you know what? If they want to make their names known, I'd rather the abutters do that. But as far as the plan and people having preference at the last hearing, I just heard people say it. I mean, I think four or five people.
That's great. I think with all due respect, we're kind of drifting away now from the original question. And that question is, OSID, if we close it, are there any, any other objections to us closing that portion?
The question is concerning the OSID. She said that, she stated she spoke with some of the abutters and said they would rather see the preliminary plan versus the OSID, or OSID, which I've spoken to almost all the abutters, they're against the whole project currently.
Well, that's why I'm asking you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and what we're trying to do is this eliminates one part of the project. Okay? If you look at this plan that's up here, all those little squares are units. Thirty-six total? And in the conventional, how many units do you come up with?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Absolutely, that's preliminary.
If, yeah, but we can honestly say probably not more than 26.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, it won't be more than.
It won't be more than 26.
No, you don't get a bonus.
So, what this does is it takes two options that the developer has. Now, they only have one plan that they're going with. And you folks get to comment on that one plan, rather than have to go back and forth, I don't like the OSID because of this. I sat through the last hearing. When we spoke about the OSID, I don't think there was one person in the audience that said they liked the OSID plan.
The way they proposed it, sir.
So.
Well, Chris, I remember two people saying it and the room was packed, so.
Well, with all due respect to everyone in the room and the board, this is still America and the people that own the land have the right to choose what they want. And they've chosen that they're going to go with preliminary.
Mr. Chairman.
And, yes, Mr. Rich, sounds like you're.
Will we close the OSID hearing?
Motion by Chris Rich to close the OSID portion of this public hearing.
One second.
Tim seconds, because he's quicker than the draw. Any discussion beyond what we already had? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
All, all opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Four, four to one. Okay, the, so, the OSID portion is closed. Hey, we won't hear those letters anymore. This is now the continuation of the preliminary plan. It's a middle. And why don't we cut to the chase? Who's in favor of sending this to Larry Graham to get preliminary comments? We established a 53G account last time. If you want to, we can send this off. Larry can take a peek at it. He can establish what lots are and aren't, fitting into our regular subdivision, rules and regulations. He could probably get back to us and tell us what waivers are going to be necessary. Whole host of other things that Larry does.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rich.
Bring a personal privilege before we get to that, please. If you look into the audience, you'll notice that the people you said probably wouldn't be here, they're here.
Yeah, but this isn't closing tonight. You think you really made something, that you made two meetings? Tell me on the 14th Concom meeting you're at.
I would like.
Show me, show me your faces there.
I would like, Mr. Chairman.
I'm glad to hear that.
Mr. Chairman, if we may.
Yes, Mr. Rich, we have a hand. One moment, sir.
No, let the gentleman ask.
Gentlemen, sir.
Welcome to Wilkins Place. What's the name of the subdivision, proposed subdivision?
I have the vaguest idea. They usually don't do those things until the last minute.
We don't, we don't have one.
Yeah.
Do you have a recommendation?
Could be called the street next to Wilkins Place.
Right now, it's.
We've got buses.
I think it's already Fingery Road, so.
You know, we've had Marlboro Building, we've had such and such estates. Do they have a maybe name?
No, we, I mean, we'll, we'll come up with that. It's the next, probably the next iteration of plans, but we just don't have one yet.
How about the, the neighbors hate us?
Don't they always? I mean, it's not as usual reaction.
Nibby Road? Sir, state your name.
General Sisera, 26 Marlboro Road. Is this the plan that's going to be submitted, reviewed?
Yes, it is.
Okay, on this plan, I do not see a retention basin, but a right-of-way on it. And that's critical to the whole setup.
Absolutely.
And is the town responsible for cleaning the retention basin?
That'll all come out after, Jack. That'll all come out after and that will be part of the written comments that Larry Graham will put on there.
But they haven't, who determines where this retention basin is going to be?
If I may, it's a nine-sheet set. That's just the cover sheet. There are other sheets that have more information on them. They have, you know, locations of proposed stormwater management areas that, as I said at the last meeting, they haven't been designed, just places that we think that they're likely to be.
This is still a preliminary plan.
One of your group has a complete set of the plans. The lady was here and I gave her my set of plans.
She dropped them off at the office.
Oh, she did?
She returned them the next day.
Jack, this is a preliminary plan.
If someone wants to take my copy, you're welcome to take my copy and dissect it, look at it.
It's available in the planning office.
It's only a preliminary.
But I understand, it's only a preliminary. The definitive is the one you want to be at, for sure, because that's going to state exactly where everything is, exactly how it's going to be done, exactly how it's going to be handled. And before we get to that, it goes out to our reviewing engineer and he's going to give us his comments and he's going to critique the plan and make his recommendations.
And then, the plan's going to change, change, change. So, there'll be many, many iterations of it. Everybody clear on the process?
Do you ever have, oh, Arlene Cronin, 23 Cyril. Do you ever have a meeting where both the Concom and you are here, where some of these questions can be answered so that?
No.
No, you know.
No, basically, we play ping pong and the applicant is the ball.
Are you guys planning to file?
Oh, we have a question.
Merrill Stepper, 26 Cyril.
I'm sorry. Tim, what did you say?
I was just curious if they were going to file with Concom at the same time as.
They have.
I believe.
I tried, but it was in the morning. We wanted to drop the plan off.
We run the agenda. We believe in the 26th of this month with Concom.
If we aren't, we'll notify you.
Now, just to be clear, that's only for the line. We can't file with the Concom for a project until we do the definitive plan.
All you care about is the line.
That's the requirement, yes.
Yeah, here's one in Anra. Sir?
Who owns the land between the Burney Way cul-de-sac and this proposed site?
The town.
The town.
Well, there, there are homeowners that own up to the road. And behind the lots is open space.
Can we pull up an open space map? Do we have an electronic of that? Okay, one.
Well, continuing, the chief objection to this proposed plan is the access and the difficulty in the roads. To get to it, you have to make a difficult turn from 133 onto Tenny Street at a dangerous intersection. You have to proceed on Cyril Street, which is inadequate as it is. And the expansion of Cyril Street would appear to be impossible without actually taking homes. Then you have to go to Lisa Lane and finally, you are at the entrance. To return, you begin at Cyril Street and then you take a turn again on Cyril Street, which is inadequate and dangerous, to Fieldstone Road, and then from Fieldstone Road to Marlboro. And at the intersection of Marlboro Road and Tenny Street, you have another very difficult and dangerous intersection, taking you to the intersection of Tenny Street and 133, still another dangerous and difficult intersection.
Sir, you seem to be reiterating the same concerns that we heard last time.
Yes, I'm.
There were enormous traffic concerns and the board is aware of that.
Right, okay, well, let me continue then. I made a Google map and when I look at Pillsbury Lane and Burney Way and the cul-de-sac at Burney Way, I see that that isn't too far from the proposed site. And I'm just wondering, especially since the land below, belongs to the city, whether a road could not be put in there, which would make much easier and safer access to this site than the proposal that we have.
Are you suggesting that the town donate the land to the developer?
That the town put in the road if necessary. I'm not sure how, what procedure would be.
You're suggesting that the town create a road?
But I'd just like to.
The board will take that into consideration.
Yeah, I'd just like to submit that map, which shows both roots and the superiority of the Pillsbury Road, Burney Way cul-de-sac.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm going to date this.
Yeah, you should.
Exhibit.
That should definitely go in the file.
Okay, I just want to make a comment on that comment if I could.
Yeah, have your name.
Susan Stead, 48 St. Street. I think the biggest concern is, and I can certainly see eyes rolling when gentlemen mention that, and I certainly understand that, but here's the bottom line. The access on Cyril Street, Marlboro, all that we talked about is incredibly inadequate, okay? Those roads need to be rebuilt. This development's going to happen and everybody's going to go away. And then, who's going to get stuck taking care of those roads? It's the town once again. So, to this gentleman's point, it might sound farfetched, all of you guys up there rolling your eyes, but the bottom line is.
It's an option.
It's an option.
Well, perhaps this board will.
Because at some point, somebody has to take care of these roads.
At some point, perhaps the suggestion that's been made to put a road through conservation land and the wetlands.
You're doing the same thing, you're doing the same thing they're proposing, is wetlands and conservation land.
Well, perhaps, Susan, you're a realtor, you understand these things.
I do.
I hope that, I know you're going to the Concom meetings.
I am.
When, when that gets, when that issue gets raised at the Concom meeting, please let, come back and let us know what they say and how favorably they look upon that.
But to everybody's point, just looking at other options for egress is just, it's just an option. Trying to find out something that may work for the developer, for the landowners, for the current residents, it's just options.
One of the things that was very, very difficult for me personally, when I got on this board, was recognizing that this board does not dictate where roads go. This board is in receipt of notices that an applicant that owns land wishes to create a road on their land.
I'm going to, I'm sure.
And thereby, they have every right to do so as long as they do it the way we dictate to certain specifications, subsurface width, curbing, et cetera.
And I would think safety would come into that as well.
Absolutely, and that's built into it.
That's my point.
That's built into it. But you have to remember that if someone proposes a development onto an existing street, which is presumed to be safe, because if that street is not safe, then I would suggest you talk to the highway department and have it shut down.
Well, it's safe in its current situation, but you add another 500 to 800 car trips per day and it's not safe.
How many car trips? We don't know.
Probably 500 or so.
We'll need a traffic study.
Who does the traffic study? The developer?
The, the traffic study will be done by a consultant.
Right.
But that's in the definitive.
But probably.
That's in the definitive.
No, because the developer won't be hiring him.
They won't?
No. The town hires him.
The town hires him.
Yeah, so it's a third party, independent. And before we leave that, Harry, if I get the comment was considering accessing this site utilizing conservation land. And with, and correct me if I'm wrong, with your experience on the Conservation Commission, the town accepts land. In one, in your experience, has the town ever given that land back for a use such as that?
No, to do such a thing would require.
It takes an action of the state, doesn't it?
Yes, it would require two-thirds vote of a majority of the Senate, two-thirds vote of the House of Representatives. It literally is an act of Congress to do that. And forgive me if I couldn't help but roll my eyes, but I, I just understand that as superficially, as great an idea as that sounds on the surface, practically, it never will happen in this case. Because before that, the Conservation Commission has to vote as a commission that, that the area is, is considered excess land to Georgetown. And it has to be a unanimous vote. Any one Conservation Commissioner can squash it. And it has to be a unanimous vote. Any one Conservation Commissioner can squash it. Been through it. No disrespect meant at all by the eye, by the rolling of the ass. Then it goes to, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
It's so far removed from any stretch of reality that could potentially occur that, um, I have trouble wrapping my mind about things like that, and I want to move on.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rich. Were you going to make a motion?
No, two things.
To send the plan to Larry Graham?
Two things I want to say, and then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I showed the picture to Attorney Man, and with no objection from her, you can enter that into the record, Howard.
Absolutely.
And would you kindly supply Attorney Man, yeah, excuse me, with a copy of it? Secondly, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rich.
Um, blaming on my education, but I think reality is what you make of it.
Yeah.
And I think asking the question.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't hurt.
Not at all.
And the question I would ask is, you as the developer, do you have a problem asking that question to the town?
No, I mean, is, can I ask you a question? Is that, is that subject to one eighty-three? Is that a perpetual conservation restriction that requires legislation to remove and it use?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Whatever it is, what I'm, what I'm asking is if you ask it, that's the response you get.
We have no, we can ask. I don't think it's usable. I mean, the town to build the land, I mean, build the road?
Write a letter. Go ahead. Let me ask Peter Dirk if he'll build the road for you.
You know, if you don't ask, you don't know. And I think it's a legitimate point. If there is a viable alternative, and somebody comes up with it, and it's agreeable to everybody, where I come from, what are you wasting time with? Arguing over something else?
Yeah.
Do it.
Yeah. Maybe I've been on this board too long.
Go back to your statement that we think alike.
Yeah, well, maybe I've been on this board too long, but the only possible thing that I could see from that is perhaps if the developer wished to do some improvements to Cyril Street of their own volition, entirely of their own volition, not being exacted by this board, no quid pro quo, then of course, we would have to look at it if they offered it. But again, this is all in preliminary. This is so far down the road.
That being said, Mr. Chairman, would you send the, uh, the plan out to Larry Graham?
Oh, motion by Chris?
More discussions for that.
To send the, the plan out to Larry Graham, and we can discuss anything.
Uh.
We have a motion on the floor. I'm sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, by Bob. Is this in respect to sending the plan out to Larry Graham?
Right. Can, can, Rich, can you, uh, what kind of wetland lines have you done? Determinations?
So, we have a motion on the floor.
I know you do.
About sending it to Larry.
But I don't, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
Because a preliminary plan needs some more detail than what he's given us.
I'm sure Larry will tell us that.
But why do we waste his time?
I think the plan has everything that, that the plan, that the, the planning board asked for in a planning, in a preliminary plan. It is included.
So you followed one three sixty-five thirty-nine C?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Followed that to the T?
Yep, the wetland line is on there, there's topo on there, there's profiles, drainage.
You got the streams on there?
Yep.
Within two hundred feet?
Yep. Beavements, everything.
Uh, where, uh, drainage, you've got that all set out for your roads?
If I can, Tilly, bear in mind that if any of those required things aren't on this plan, Larry's the one that's going to point it out and put it in writing, and, and let us know.
Well, it's quite detailed.
Absolutely, and that's why we send it out to Larry, as opposed to looking at it ourselves.
It ought to go to the CONCOM first. I kind of think.
I'm sorry?
Why's it need to go to the town?
I think it ought to go there, because look at this detail on the wetland, the watershed outline and drainage plan.
Yeah, we did that.
It's all subject to what the CONCOM is going to rule anyways.
All right, we're going to, well, you guys are interested in speeding up the process, you eliminated the OSRD, and now you're going to drag things on with this. All right, send it to Larry. Do it.
Wait a minute, I don't understand. Drag things on? How so? I think it's expeditious to get it right out to Larry. Let's get the comments.
Yeah, so Larry is going to go checking over all these things that the CONCOM is supposed to.
No, those are the planning board requirements.
I'm missing the CONCOM thing.
It is, it is the planning board requirement, but so is the CONCOM.
They aren't going.
The streams, the drainage, the.
What the CON, and I understand your question, it's more like what you do at a definitive, when you have that bifurcation, so you have the CONCOM evaluating those things?
No, it's preliminary. It's in the preliminary.
No, it's not for the CONCOM rules. When you look at the CONCOM, they can't even evaluate the plan and look at all of the drainage. All they look at is the wetland line to establish it, because there's no notice of intent before them, because it hasn't gone to definitive, and there's rules for submissions to the CONCOMs.
All they're doing is showing a line.
Yeah, that's all we can do at this point.
This is wetland, this is, and then the board.
We can't submit a plan to the CONCOM until we've submitted the definitive plan to your board.
The Wetland Protection Act controls.
Because there's nothing to submit to them.
So after that, you do the NOI?
You're doing concurrently.
With the definitive plan. That's, that is the way, well, the ANRAD is established, and then we know the line, and, and we know what the rules are, we know what your regulations are, even locally for the bylaw for the wetland.
Do it all the time.
Exactly.
With us.
Any, any other questions from the board? A motion was made by Chris, seconded by Bob, to send the plans to Larry Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Rich.
There are a number of hands that were up in the audience.
Okay, there's still a number of hands. I'm going to start with you, sir.
Just a, just a quick question.
Could you state your name just so?
Carl Stecker, twenty-six, Cyril Street. When was the wetland survey done? And I ask this question because obviously, these surveys can go wrong. The experience of our, of our library, um, which is underwater every time it rains, um, how can we be certain that the wetland survey will not result in a similar seasonal problem that when it's actually raining, uh, we discover things are wetlands after all?
That's something that the CONCOM will deal with. They deal with hydro soils, and they have their scientists do that.
Thank you.
That's their, that's in their domain.
Thank you.
Well, you recall the window that the CONCOM?
Yeah, they, they don't do them in the winter.
It's April fifteenth.
April, I don't know what happened at the library.
Do you know when it ends? April fifteenth to?
Oh, I want to say October, November, or something like that. I don't remember. It's been too long. It's been too long.
You might want to ask that same question for the new school.
Uh, go ahead, sir. I haven't seen your face before.
Jeff Litch, thirteen, Lisa Lane.
I'm sorry?
Jeff Litch, thirteen, Lisa Lane.
Did you get that one? Hi.
I remember in the last meeting that we looked at all these plans and the drawings of the, the lines for the wetlands. The board had an objection to it, saying that they thought it was pretty vague and, and that it, it needed a lot more work. And, and Tilly is bringing up those issues, and it seems to me like this is just trying to be pushed through. And I think it really needs to be done slowly and correctly.
I, and I, I certainly understand where you're coming from, sir, but, um, until they go to the CONCOM and come back with those actual lines, when the CONCOM says.
Did they make more, did they make more drawings and more measurements between this meeting and last meeting?
The CONCOM is going to tell them exactly where the wetlands are. They're not going to tell the CONCOM where they are.
Yeah, that'll all happen.
Their concept plan is where they, where their idea of where the wetlands are, where their experts and consultants have told them where the wetlands are. The CONCOM makes the final decision. We're not pushing anything through.
Then I think Tilly's asking to do it the right way. I think the CONCOM.
What Tilly's asking for is putting the cart before the horse, if you, if you really want to know what this member's thoughts are. The CONCOM makes that decision. I'm not going to put anyone through, whether it's this developer or any other developer, or you, or anyone else in this room or in this town, through an exercise in futility that's going to cost you money and time. CONCOM makes that decision. That's what they're appointed for. We don't make it. They get their yes or no from the CONCOM on what's wet, what's not, what they can do within a certain, within certain parameters of space, not us.
So let's wait for them.
We react to that.
Let's wait for them.
We, we are. They can't get to the CONCOM until they get through this stage of where we are right now.
You're sending your, your plans out for engineering.
We're going to send it out, but until they send a definitive to us, they can't go before the Conservation Commission, because then the CONCOM looks at their definitive and says, all right, they say that this is where their wetland is, but we say, no, it's here. And what the CONCOM says, if they say, no, it's here, it's there.
How was, how was Larry going to make that determination?
Okay, I, I think, you know what?
Excuse me? The gentleman was speaking, he made a comment. I'm sorry, sir.
It just seems to me like we're trying to rush this thing and get everything ready for the CONCOM.
I can assure you, sir, that we're not rushing it. What we've learned in the past is that you can take certain steps so that months down the road, it all culminates in permits. But we're in the preliminary stage.
Or denial.
Or denial, but.
That sounds good.
I don't think they under, I don't think they really understand what the process is. I mean, I think it's, if I may? So what, because they, they're just, they're thinking that they have, you, you do a wetland determination, and you, you, you do the whole thing for the subdivision and identify where you're going to locate structures. That's not when it happens. That happens in the NOI stage. What we, the first thing you do is you submit your preliminary plan to the board, so you open your hearing. The next thing you do in tandem with that is submit an ANRAD. That means a request for the, for the Conservation Commission to tell us where the wetland line is. It's done by biologists, it's based on hydro soil and, and plants, period. All they do is identify the line. Once that happens, then that information is interpreted onto the plans, and then from that point, the board makes certain recommendations based on Larry Graham's comments, and then we take all of that information and proceed to a definitive plan. Nothing here is being done to rush. It is being done in, in the proper fashion. Everything is being done in the proper fashion. You cannot go before CONCOM with anything until you're at a definitive stage. Oh, you have, yeah, there's other filings too. I mean, this is only what they call a preliminary plan. This is just when the board gives us some preliminary comments.
According to this here, this is the preliminary plan requirement on three sixty-five dash eighteen.
Yep, boy, I read it.
All right, you got the site survey map.
Yep.
Watershed outline, drainage, and an integrated drainage plan.
Yep.
I didn't see that.
Did you, did you look at the plan?
This is the only thing that you've shown us.
It's nine sheets. It's in there. Yes.
What you see up there, that's just the overview. That's just the cover sheet.
But inside your package, you have that information.
A wetlands protection statement? What's the statement say?
It's in, it's in your application. Basically, we're trying to do the line, and we're going to proceed and get a confirmation from the Conservation Commission. Again, all you're doing is, 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 if you will, you need to go through your process, and we're going through it.
Going through it.
But no, we're not. You're, you're just telling us that we haven't submitted, but we've submitted those plans. But the public's getting confused, thinking we're in a stage of the approval process that we're not. We're not.
They're doing close.
No, I mean, this is the initial. This gives you the opportunity to provide preliminary. This is a benefit to this board. The definitive plan is what they're.
Well, I didn't get an answer to one of the questions I gave you, Chris.
What was it?
If the CONCOM right now, because there's no detail on the plans, cannot make their determinations, how can Larry?
Because the CONCOM just received, or is receiving an ANRAD plan to merely identify, identify resource areas. This is your process. This is what we are required to do.
Larry is going to look at this and say, this doesn't fit, this road's not right. He's going to get the complete set of plans. He's going to say, I don't like this drainage. I think this would be more appropriate. I think what the applicant is saying is that until the ANRAD, until the CONCOM says, here's your wetlands line, now you can go to the next step and start developing your definitive. So they've got to get to that until they get to this stage.
It's a process.
It's a process, and, and.
I understand.
Just so you know, we, we don't have to file a preliminary plan. This is, this is in, this is a initial filing to get comments so that we can incorporate them into the definitive plan. We could just file a definitive plan. So we could have cut out this step.
I understand.
And file the definitive. So this plan is, in addition, it provides additional information so we can have additional input, so the definitive plan can have incorporated the comments from the town and the neighbors to the extent that it's possible.
And it's also required to do the OSRD. That's why you did the preliminary. Let's face it. That's, that's all connected. That's why you're doing the preliminary, is because the OSRD requirement is in our laws.
It says you may with the OSRD. It does not say you have to. Absolutely not.
It says you may, but you have to file one.
You don't have to file it.
No, you do not.
Tilly, unless it says you shall.
Yeah, you do not have to file it.
So you did the, you filed this OSRD for what?
You may, oh, she's, okay, you, you have to file the OSRD. You do not, you do not have to file a preliminary plan. That's our point.
That was optional, filing the preliminary in addition to the OSRD.
Yes.
And it's a fair amount of information. It's a nine-sheet set. The OSRD is not. It's a, it's a concept plan and a yield plan.
Well, we, we sent out, we, the water department, for instance, we sent out the plans to them, and they're telling us the same thing. We can't, this is not detailed enough for us to make a determination.
That's because they make those comments on the definitive.
Right, so.
But they're going to get another shot at it when we do the definitive.
You know, I'm wondering, you know, what the, why are we sending it to them if they're not going to, you know, give us any detail?
They, they might say that there isn't any water in Cyril Street, right, or they might say that.
I don't think so.
Well, there we go back to.
No, I know, but that's, that's, that's the reason that you send it out, so that you can get comments.
They, yeah, they do have concerns about pressure.
There's not enough detail for that. The planning board and the planning department to, to not coordinate with all other town departments for cursory review. And they, they're all, they're coming.
Well, each one is saying that.
I would say especially early in the process.
Right.
Very early. It's extremely early in the process. Extremely early. I saw a hand back, back in the, I saw a hand. Was I imagining something?
Mr. Mamalat, six, do you need? Lou Mamalat, I'm living fourteen Marlborough Road. Not necessarily speaking for or against the project, or for or against the process, but I actually spent some time on the Conservation Commission back when Little's Hill came before us. And I remember feeling pretty sandbagged, because at that time, the developer came before conservation with like a hundred and thirty acre parcel of land, and expected us to nail down all the wetland lines. And I think after a while, it's human nature to go, ah, it's kind of close. But here, where you've got things shown in context to where the wetlands are shown, I think that will actually make the Conservation Commission look a little more critically at where the line is. So I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing to, to have this set up this way. Again, not speaking for or against the project, for or against the process.
I have a question.
We have that in terms of what goes before CONCOM. Seeing the stuff in context to where the wetlands are makes you look at the wetlands a lot more critically.
I have a question for you, Lou, being that you are an engineer and you are, you have presented the East Main Park and Rec plan for, for fields and parking lot. Will this development impact that plan as far as drainage and wetlands?
This project is sort of in the middle of projects that we're working with Park and Rec to develop on either end. It would be wonderful if the town had the foresight to make a road go from East Main Street to Martel Way to connect the possible land that we bought in advance to develop this Greenway carter and dovetail it in with this. But I don't think the Park and Rec as another volunteer board in town was ever so presumptuous as to think that the rest of the town would get behind that in short order, so.
That's not my question, Lou.
Sure.
Will the water and drainage from this development on their roads, whatever?
I think you're asking me to speak professionally.
Yeah, that's, that's an unfair question, Tilly. You can't ask him. He doesn't have calculation.
But what I would say is this is, this project is going to collect and channelize and treat stormwater, and I assume to the standards that they're required to uphold. It's different than the project that we're doing, which is essentially all impervious areas, so it's, their project is not going to impact our project.
That's what I wanted to know.
I, I don't, I don't believe so, but again, it's not, they haven't shown where the, where they're discharging to.
I saw some other hands.
Jean Nelson, Perry, South Street. What's the timeline for this? I can't remember in the subdivision control law, there was a period for dealing with the areas?
As long as they keep continuing it.
Has it been continued?
No, but we'll be looking for one because we continue to.
You mean continue or an extension?
They've filed an extension.
An extension has been filed?
Yeah. They're gonna most likely file another one because their first extension ends June 30th.
Okay.
We're doing quarters.
The second question I have, I guess, is more from Ms. Mann. Will the preliminary go through the entire approval or disapproval process from the board before a definitive is filed?
Of course.
That's an excellent question.
Well, I've seen it where the preliminary is filed, but a preliminary actually, even if you deny it, they can go ahead forward with the definitive. So I see it where a definitive was filed right after preliminary, because all they really were doing was locking in the zoning. So I'm asking the question, is this gonna be seen through to some kind of a conclusion after we receive Larry Graham's comments? Or is it the intent to file a definitive sometime prior to that?
Sometimes prior to the close of the.
So you're finishing with your review of the preliminary?
I can't see a developer spending the money and time. Attorney man's not cheap.
I see what you're saying, but I have.
Engineer's time's not cheap.
I have seen it happen, so that's my question.
A legitimate question and we'll pose it. Easy answer. Before the close of this hearing, are you gonna file a definitive?
I don't know. It'll depend upon what the process is.
We would anticipate finishing, but.
And we anticipate closing, but I can't, you know, on public record, I can't make that representation.
The reality of the thing is the developer doesn't know what our thoughts are yet.
Yeah, I have to wait.
On what, if we're going to approve anything, or what we'd wanna see on a plan to get it to the point where we either approve it or not, or dissect it in other ways. That's what this is all about, to come up with all of that and say, that's interesting, that's, that's more interesting, came up with a good idea, are there other alternatives of access and egress? That's what this part is all about.
I understand, but I'm just asking the timeline. Somebody back here asked me hilarious. I know hilarious, but maybe you wanna explain it for our people.
My apologies. When we see Larry Graham, Larry Graham is the town engineer. He's the review engineer. He does, reviews all the technical specifications and details of all the plans for us.
For us. We hire them with their money.
And sends us back reports.
A question. Does he, those reviews, like the traffic study, does he suggest that or you?
He makes those suggestions, but we come up with things like that too.
Do you ask him to look into that or?
No, we would hire someone else for something specific like that.
He'll look at sightlines. Look at sightlines on corners.
But if no highway standards.
So prior to the traffic study, who, who requests the traffic study?
This board.
This board.
But not in preliminary.
All right, I stated my name before, Eric Rizzo for Wilkins Place. I have a concern about the lots being open, all right?
The lots being?
The way that the roads laid out where, where the road would go adjacent to Wilkins Place. Because you're telling me you recommend the traffic study, I wanna make another suggestion. In the wintertime, when it's real quiet at night, I can barely hear the highway. With them opening up all these lots and road, it's gonna create a substantial amount of noise coming off of 95. Could I request that a noise pollution study be done? And if that it changes and the noise decibels increase, that the developer would be responsible as in putting on some kind of barrier along 95?
You can request anything you want, sir.
Would the board, I mean, I'm just, again, it's a quiet life issue where I live in a very quiet neighborhood.
But I can tell you that it's very similar to something that occurred, a concern that people had at another subdivision. At the end of, don't run. And what was, what was determined was the best thing was a hay. A hill was created to create a buffer between Route 95 and the Hopes. And that hill blocked the sound.
Could the board recommend a noise pollution study?
Basically ordered it. The board basically ordered it.
Would they usually do something like that on?
Certainly if we thought that there would be a concern, we could do, we could, we could address it.
Well, the power lines go right up to 95. So once you open up that area, that noise is gonna travel right down the power lines into this, into this development, right through Wilkins Place and through Lisa Lane.
So definitely need to put that in the mix. He has concerns about noise. More.
I'll let you go.
Chris Woodlock in 9 Rosemary Lane. I understand that they're going to be going from the Conservation Commission on the 26th of this month, is that correct?
What was the date of the tour?
We think the 26th.
26th, they meet on Thursday.
Either the 26th or their following meeting.
So if there's no definitive plan, what is that meeting about?
It's an ANRAD where they determine the wetland line.
At the meeting?
Yep. Well, we don't know. It's, that's why they bring it up.
It's a process.
It's a process again.
Process is that they bring a plan that says, we believe as the applicant that this is where the wetlands are, the, all the wetland resources. The Concom takes that, they go out in the field, they determine that, gee, this needs to move a couple of feet east. This is completely wrong. This is right. This isn't really a pond. This is a vernal pool. This isn't nothing. This is a, this is a stream, et cetera, et cetera. They come back and then they order that. And that is the determination. And at that point, then, the applicant has to put it on their plans. And you should, any abutters within 300 feet should have received.
100, yep.
No, it's, it's true.
300 feet, just judge it. Any abutter within 300 feet.
Any abutters?
No, no, not abutters above. Any abutter within 300 feet of the parcel should receive an hearing notice from, from the Conservation.
You'll get a notice in the mail.
Yeah, I'm not.
You're not a legal abutter.
You can get on the computer and pull up the Concom.
It'll also be in the paper.
You're on Tom Hill, though?
I'm on Rosemary.
Oh, okay.
Ask your neighbors. I cannot believe that you all don't have each other's emails by now.
The town website will have it on the Conservation Commission's calendar. It'll be posted out front.
Lisa Lane.
Oh.
I'm thinking West Park.
That's Lois Lane.
Lynn Grossline, 60th Avenue. I just had a comment when they were talking about the walkway that might be going through to the other property, that where it's coming in is very wet. There's a stream that goes along that area and goes into more wet. And if you walk out there, you can't walk out there because it's really wet. So would they put a walkway there? Would they do something such that, because I'm a walker and I walk a lot, would they put a walkway out there such that it would be something that people could use? Because otherwise.
You'd have to determine whether it was upland or wetland and what it is. If it's wet, then it's really not connectivity. And as generous as the author is, I don't think we'd accept it. If it doesn't provide some kind of connectivity other than for, you know, something that's an amphibian, I was thinking more like human beings being able to use it. As generous as it would be, I'm sure you wouldn't try to ask us about.
And the other thing I had a comment on was that in a previous meeting, it said that there weren't any vernal pools out there. There are, there is definitely one that we have brought people out to, which is not on their property. It's right next to their property and so on.
On my property.
Mr. Duncan's property. And it is a vernal pool.
It's a certified vernal pool?
Yes. Oh, we had Chris Kaminsky come out.
And it's certified by natural heritage?
Yeah, certifiable.
It's certifiable or certified?
It's a same, it's, it depends on the owner, whether they want to send it into the.
Exactly.
Iable, iable.
And if it's.
Good if iable.
But it's based on the Conservation Board determination.
That's something very, very important to tell Concom when you go to that meeting.
Could we make some suggestions right now before it goes off to Larry on the size of these lots? Ourselves or are we gonna wait for Larry to tell us?
You can make all, this is, as Harry said to begin.
Before you finish with public comment and go to board comments, I have a member of the public that emailed me and just wanted to read it.
Oh, absolutely. We have a, we have a public comment.
Before you go to board comments, just finish up with the public and.
Okay, well, it seems as though we have one more.
Kevin Duncan, 46 South Street. I am probably the biggest abutter here, right to the right of my good friend in the garage. I just wanna talk with him, but does the developers show, I came home one day and had ribbons in my bushes and my trees. The developers, developers have the wetlands on my property because somebody was out there. And it's really close to those three houses where the vernal pool is. There's a lot of wetland. I've been ice skating out there for 25 years. I just wanna, if they have a slide up there that can show where the wetlands are on my property.
You're required to show it 100 feet past the property, Rich, or?
200, I think.
200?
Sometimes.
I think we showed them, you know, to the extent that we, we could get them, I think it's done there somewhere. I'm not sure how much.
And, and sir, your concern is, is what? The flags were placed on your property?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get it as a question. What, what, what is the question?
I wanted to know if they could show the wetlands on my property.
They have, right?
Because that's where the vernal pool is. And it's really close to my property.
This is your property, right?
Okay, maybe we can get it on the web though? We can get it on the web though? Yeah, I believe they are showing it.
They're showing the line, yeah.
This isn't. This is your pool.
It's not the vernal pool.
Is this your property, sir?
Yes, sure.
Well, they are showing wetlands.
Not the vernal pool.
They're not showing a vernal pool.
No vernal pool.
Right, right. And that determination is something that has to be made by the Concom. And all good people can have good, you know, opinions about what it is.
Is that something Concom already has on record or will they be going?
If they don't have it on record, it'll become part of their record with their investigation through the ANRAD.
Presuming that it's.
Presuming it's within 200 feet of the property.
And presuming there's any water left in it when the delineation is done.
Right in Mike Kelly.
Hope they get out there soon.
Are you ready to read it?
I received an email from Marlene Patrakas. She requested that I read this because she's unable to attend.
Where does she live, Chris? Uh, Howard? Marlene? She's an abutter?
24 Marlboro Road.
Thank you.
I'm writing my opposition to the proposal to develop the subject development. Danger to children with increased traffic coming from the proposed development. Water pressure here is already low and will get worse if the proposal passes. Water quality is already poor. It will only get worse. We already have water restrictions in place. Approval of the proposal will make it more costly to the residents here. The deer population will only get worse because construction will force them to go elsewhere. And guess who is complaining about the heavy tick population in the area? She's already spent money on veterinarian bills because of embedded ticks. Does anybody in the local government care about the residents already here or is it just about additional revenue on the town, which will only be spent back on the problems this development will create? Increased student population in already overcrowded schools. Please make my comments available to those who are responsible for making the decision on this proposal. So this will be part of the public record and that was a summary.
Okay. Do we wanna do a sitewalk?
After hearing about the ticks?
Well, after hearing about.
Sure. I'll do a sitewalk.
Okay, when, when will we be continuing this still? You're, you're gonna need, we're gonna need time to get Larry's comments back. This is the beginning of June. What are we looking at, the beginning of July? About a month for Larry? Get his comments back?
July 10th is the, is the first public hearing and then July 24th.
So do we wanna do a?
Did you get a copy of this?
Continue work.
Yeah, I'll forward the email to them.
Oh, we gotta get the. Continuation to July 10th? Is that what you said? That's the next meeting?
If you continue it to July 10th.
Do you want to do a sitewalk of the weekend before that or what is the weekend before that? July?
July 4th week.
Ms. Mann, did, did you ever resolve the question of waiver indemnification for anybody that wanted to join on the sitewalk?
I hadn't talked to the owners yet, no.
Can we?
Oh, I thought you were going to do that.
I was. I didn't think we were gonna do a sitewalk with a preliminary because we don't have the real layout. So it's not, you're just gonna be walking vacant land because we don't really know.
Oh, Rich will have plenty of times to walk out there with some stakes and drive them in.
And not by the 10th, but based on Larry, honestly, in order to get, come back here by the 10th, have a sitewalk, get Larry Graham's comments and then be able to effectively respond, it'll never happen by the, by July 10th. Not with the, the interceding weekend.
Right. July 4th week.
I mean, it, with, yeah, because we're trying to.
10th, what would it be?
24th.
24th.
This is the wettest June we've had in a long time. So I think if you're gonna walk.
Well, I mean, the walk is going to be with the Concom because they need to look at the ANRAD. I just, you're gonna end up having to come out again on the definitive. So I, I'm not opposed to sitewalk because we're gonna do it with the Conservation Commission. It just, you're gonna have to do it again because it's not going to be the same. The, the location potentially of the cul-de-sac's not gonna be there. We're not gonna be able to show you the basins.
You wanna go or you wanna wait?
No, I tend to agree with Tim.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm not gonna do the Concom's job.
Oh, no, I'm not even saying that.
And you're welcome. I'll notify this board through Howard when that walk is and you're welcome to go with them.
Howard heads up and maybe we'll do it, uh, Bob, wait for the, wait for the definitive?
That's what I brought today.
Okay, Tilly?
I agree with Tim.
Wait for the definitive. Okay, leave it.
I think Larry's gonna come back with, you know, you can't make a decision on a lot of this stuff. I don't think.
There's eight pages. You're only looking at one.
Yeah.
The eight pages went into some substantial.
So we, I'll bet you.
If it's not enough, I will say I want more.
Well, that's kinda my point with the 10.
Let's be clear here.
There'll be back and forth. It'll be more productive for you.
It'll start off the process.
I'm not expecting.
You'll know what you have to get.
Or have I ever seen a review come back from Larry that says everything's okay?
Yeah, I know.
And just for, as I understand it, the board's requesting the technical reviewer, reviewing engineer, do a peer review of the preliminary plan. His guidelines for that review are going to be the requirements of submitting a preliminary plan. He's not going to be doing any type of determination of that. He's not going to be doing any type of drainage calculations. That type of in-depth analysis is going to come with a definitive.
Yeah.
But he will review it and inform the board.
If there's any deficiencies or anything.
Deficiencies in the preliminary submittal, as well as questions about lot sizes, lot factors.
Potential waivers.
Waiver requests that may or may not be. If anything, it will be an agreement of what is being presented.
And it starts the process.
Absolutely.
And he's going to take, I mean, my guess is he won't. With that intervening weekend, we won't get comments back quickly enough for you.
This, the intricacies of this subdivision, it's not something you're going to get back in a week.
Well, how about a July 24th date for a continuation? Somebody want to make a motion for that?
I think that's true.
Sure.
Tim moves to continue the hearing to July 24th. Is that the right date?
Seconded by Bob.
Sure.
Who was the question?
It was Chris.
Rose by the other name.
Do you want to submit that extension now or at the next 24?
Seconded by Chris, all in favor. All opposed. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously.
I'll do it now.
June 30th?
We already did, since we're not going to meet till July 24th. I did it till July 30th. Be better for you.
On that, okay, because usually goes by quarters.
Yeah, I'd hate to continue all the way to then. I just figure we do it to the 30th, then we'll extend again.
So you went to June 30th?
Yeah. July.
July 30th.
You could put it later then.
July. No, we do it in a three-month increments so that we don't mess up. September 30th.
Right. The problem is, once I do an extension for then, I can't, I don't know if I can file my definitive.
He can end the public hearing and close out the review before the extension at 20.
That's not...
We can close tonight and deny, too. I mean...
That's not our meeting date. That's just your extension.
Finish that.
It just lets us, so we don't mess up and we don't fall behind.
You did it July 30th. So you can do it at the July 24th meeting if you need it.
If we remember.
Oh, I'll remember.
Okay, moving right along. And the next one. Everybody, in case, yeah, you missed it. Most of the hearings continue to July 24th. Be right back here.
At 7:30 or 7?
Uh...
7?
Oh, and around the 7, yeah. Sorry. Time served, right?
Thank you.
Does everyone that's still here from the public understand what just happened?
It's continued again.
It's continued to July 24th. All the materials available in the planning office. And come back and offer any other comments that you may have.
During that time, keep an eye on the website of the town hall so you can see when there'll be input CONCOM.
Yeah, really, I need one right now.
And the Bruins are up 1-0.
End of the first quarter. We're reopening the continuation of the East Main Street Recreational Fields hearing. Come on down.
Can I talk to you about the...
My plans?
Hood, the end of Searl Street, the hood plant. Walking around, Lisa Lane and Marble Way. Now you can start to smell what I used to smell long ago. Told me I can smell pockets.
No. Chemical smell. Chemical smell.
Call the border health in the morning. Speak to Deb Rogers.
Thank you.
Did I say something?
No, just so you know, it's going to change a little bit. So I'm going to sign special permit. I'll put the name in, and then I'll give this to the next meeting.
Ah, yeah. We will allow that. Sounds like a plan. By unanimous consent. Come on up, Lou. Come on up, please.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
36 seconds, Mr. Millroy.
Hi, Lou.
I'm sorry.
You too, Wendy. I wish you all those ram crackers come out.
That sounds interesting. It does sound very interesting.
I had Phil.
Better, Harry.
Good night.
And you live to tell the tale.
All the good stuff's over, huh?
We, Tiner, are making parts for us. I went down there and tried to retrieve their tour. Like a weekend scrap.
There you go.
In the building?
Keep that up.
In the Tiner building. I'd like to talk to you about that afterwards, actually.
Great.
Kind of interesting.
Okay, Lou, we know you're here for the reopening, excuse me, the continuation of the East Main Street recreational project. Give us a quick, very quick 30-second synopsis of what we need to know.
It's shocking that nobody's waiting around.
Time's up. 30 seconds?
Yeah.
Did they elevate or what?
You submit the plans to Larry Graham?
Yes, I did. At the last...
Howard, has Larry reviewed the plans?
Larry has received the plans. He has not reviewed them or provided in the planning office with...
Oh, so we don't have his comments back?
Is it the set that you just sent me, Lou? Yes. Is it possible to take, I don't know, 20 minutes to flip through the comment letter and flip through the drawings, show you clearly that we've made the changes, and keep this thing moving?
I'll take your word for it that you made the changes, and Larry's looking at those changes now? And he'll get back to us?
He's looking at the revised set.
Okay. Great. And he'll get back to us?
Do you have a request for a continuous or an extension?
You need to provide an extension at times.
Yeah, I'll get you that form. I think you emailed it to me, so I have one.
What is it, September?
Well, the form is, we, obviously, we're trying to move it along faster than that.
Yeah, just so that we don't mess up.
Hold on. You know what? Before we wrap this up, I'll have Elizabeth sign it.
There you go.
Yeah.
So we'll do that.
So the plans went to Larry?
Yes.
Larry's reviewing them. When do you figure Larry will have them back to us?
Well, he received, when did I get the packets from you? Was it last Tuesday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday. We sent them out Monday afternoon, so he's received them. And I expect another two weeks, we ought to have.
Two, three weeks? So we're looking at our July 10th meeting?
Why weren't they sent out sooner than that?
Why, July?
What happened that they didn't get?
July 10th.
We do this on a part-time basis, and unfortunately, that's as fast as I could turn things around. I mean, he had 40 comments on it, so...
I'm hearing a lot of comments from the residents in Georgetown.
Regarding?
Regarding how long this is taking and putting the burden on the planning board.
Well, can I ask this?
And now, when we're trying to move things along...
What burden are we putting on the planning board?
That we're holding up this process. We're holding up.
Have you gone to the ZBA yet, Lou?
No, I haven't. No. What...
You can't get a permit without a ZBA approval anyway.
Well, I received, I've received the same comments, that the planning board is holding up Park and Rec on East Main Street. My response to the people is, please go educate yourself.
Yeah. Thick in your skin a little.
It's not us.
Thick in your skin.
Well, it was a selectmen.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're on TV, so people at home can hear. I mean, the funding for the construction of this project is not fully in place. And the funding mechanism for this project just now accepted and approval to use funds to build a synthetic turf field at the high school, which, if I understand the process correctly, will be tapping into the same funding source for this project over the next several years. I don't know all the dollar values, but essentially, by the time the funding shows up to match this project, the permits for this project will probably be expired. So I'm not sure, I take great offense to the idea that somehow I'm dragging the process out.
We didn't say you.
Okay. Well, then, then people, then people should, then people should understand that. Either the town is behind the project by voting to fund the construction of the project or they're not.
Well, they did that years ago.
In terms of the permits, that's understood. It's understood that there's a normal process, and that's what was...
Well, 300,000 was appropriated.
What was said was, "The planning board has been accused of dragging this out and slowing you down."
Those words have not come from me.
No.
I think we just got off to a slow start, and we're in it now. We're near the end. I think we just need Larry's professional opinion to get back as soon as possible. So whatever you can do to communicate with him that we really need in three weeks' time, whenever we're meeting again, that we need his opinion, and all the things Lou corrected, we should be good to go. And that should do it with our special permit. And then we'll go on to ZBA and CONCOM.
You need to file and go through ZBA before the planning board can approve.
I would highly suggest that you run a parallel track and file with the ZBA because you're going to, it'll sync up. You don't want to do this sequentially. You want to do this on the same track.
And as I understand it, the ZBA review could be done in probably a night. It's not going to be a multi-month-long process.
I was not aware that ZBA, I was not aware that ZBA had to approve, approve a permit.
Before this. We didn't, we weren't aware of that.
Before you can close this hearing.
Because they're in the floodplain allegedly.
Yes.
No, no, it's not before we can approve this one. It's before you can get a full permit to build.
Did John matew?
We would never be in the position of saying you need a permit from another board before you can get our permit.
Oh, correct. Right, right. So we can get your permit, right?
All right.
And the expectation is that once we...
Won't have the green light to build.
Once we lock down this permit, we would go parallel between ZBA and CONCOM, knowing full well that we have the hardest of the three permits to lock down.
Are we really the hardest?
Well, not the hardest, but the longest lead time in terms of what's being asked for us to prepare.
And Lou, if I can suggest it, go before and get it done to ZBA, and you'll knock one off, and then you'll knock the planning board off, and then you'll knock the CONCOM. So if there's a perception among the town...
Yeah, can we have a different term? I come from Everett. You don't want to knock the planning board off.
So just to, so I understand, so we all understand, we can still get your special permit prior to going to the zoning board?
You can. You can. But, and what I'm saying is, you can do it before waiting for the planning board to approve.
Right, that's fine.
Because as I understand it, all it is with the zoning board is just them agreeing or disagreeing.
We'll make sure that Lou gets on their agenda, and we'll get that done. And then can you, or can someone communicate to Larry the importance of him looking at these drawings and getting back to our next meeting? All right. Because again, we all thought he was going to be here tonight, having reviewed the drawings.
No.
But, no, that didn't happen.
That's kind of the way it was, that's kind of the perception that I had, was that the next hearing that he would be here to review. I mean, essentially, the comments were, you know, we had an arrow pointing to the wrong detail, or, I mean, of the 40 comments that were on there, there's only one engineering criteria that was spelled out. Everything else is, you know, we don't think you need this sheet, even though it's a difference of opinion, or we have, the detail is pointing to the wrong thing, or something to that effect.
I have been here for quite a while, and I have witnessed many other planning board meetings. And I have never heard from our consultant say, "If you don't do the corrections, don't send it to me." And that's what Larry said. And to me, it indicates that, I know you're saying there's a lot of little details that need correction, but the important one was not done. And Larry, quite frankly, if you didn't do it, he is not going to review it. And that's, he wrote that out in his letter.
And that was prior, though, Tilly, right? Not prior to these most recent 40 corrections, correct?
No.
Okay, so now, now he's done the 40 corrections.
You requested to send it back. So if that wasn't done again, he's going to take his time and send it back with not even looking at it. Because, you know...
That's what's in the best interest of the town. I don't get that. I just, I don't think...
Furthermore, I have had so many complaints, and, you know, whenever it's even brought up in a conversation about this East Main Field, you're holding it up. The planning board's holding it up. Well, that's got to stop. And most of it is coming from Park and Rec, because that's what these people tell me they're hearing it from. So I really would appreciate if you straightened that out. We're not holding it up.
I think we should make that stipulation right now. We're not holding it up.
It's just been a very, obviously, a long process, but let's, we're almost there. Let's just get to the end line.
We're almost there, but we're taking the fleck, and I'm fed up with it.
Motion by Chris to continue to July 10th.
I second.
Seconded by Bob.
So July 10th.
Continued to July 10th. Motion by, seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Was that it? Yeah?
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you think you can fill that out right now?
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes.
So this is to the notice of extension of...
It's basically extending the time, the time sequence that they have to follow.
Hilarious.
For planning board.
We did that, we did that.
Which is this. That doesn't mean it's going to take that long.
Right, right.
We're going to need a signature on that for the Form H. What is that, Form H extension?
And does Larry come to the next meeting, the July 10th? Does that give him that? He will be here? Or if everything looks good, does he just communicate to you that it all looks okay?
I would say what the process most likely will be is, he will review the drawings, issue a letter to the board, and when the board receives it, they'll be able to inform me to either request Larry to come to the next meeting.
Or not, if it's not necessary. Okay.
Or it's not necessary. It's not necessary because he's either, still, too many outstanding items, or there's nothing outstanding.
Right. Got it.
Okay, great. Any, thank you very much, guys. Thank you. Is there anything else?
No. Do you close the public hearing? Can you accept a Form H, or? No, you can't.
Of course you can. It can happen anything. That's ministerial. That's why we have you guys. They can bring that in tomorrow, next Thursday. I don't care when they bring it in.
Thank you.
If you could do me a favor, in chance you could scan an email, that's what I mean.
Yeah, of course. But you need to request this of the board.
Oh, we're requesting formally that we have an extension of time as submitted and signed.
There you go. Motion to accept extended Form H.
Doble.
I withdraw my motion to adjourn.
Chris, seconded by Bob. All in favor of accepting it?
Aye.
Aye.
No, it's not July 10th.
June today.
Huh? No, the extension of time should be till the 25th, the 30th of September. Today's date?
6:13.
Today's is the 12th.
6:12.
All in favor? All in favor. Motion carries.
Lou?
Yes.